Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P. M. If you would please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Tonight, our prayer will be by Councilman Fuller and our pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Jameson. Please stand.
May they welcome the Lord your God. Now, Lord, in the name of Jesus, we come before you once again and thank you, now, Lord, taking a paper above from over there, showing them up now. Now, we ask that you look upon our beloved city of God. We ask that you bless us one by one in the name of our name. Look upon our mouth, oh God. We ask that you give him the wisdom and guidance and understanding that he might be able to lead this city in right direction, for we love and we thank you, and Jesus may be praised. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Fuller, and thank you, Councilwoman Jameson. Man, if we had all these people here, everything would be even better. It's great to have all of our public safety officers here tonight with us. We thank you for all you do. Also, um, do we have any changes, Ms. Philbin, to the agenda order approval?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to add two additional events to the announcements.
Okay. Do we have a motion to put the agenda order approval with two additional announcements? Motion by Councilman Fuller, a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Councilman Georgia's accent tonight is out of town with his family. He was calling in, but we're having technical difficulties. The announcements, um, first, I would like to, before we have announcements, I would like to recognize that myself and the city council, we appointed at our last council meeting, um, an offer to hire a new city manager. All of our city staff was provided, um, that information, um, before it was sent to the media. So you did hopefully read it from the city department head before you saw it on the media, um, as your employer, but we want to recognize and thank Mr. Carlos Mols and his wife, Ms. Mols is here, um, and welcome. He will officially take office. I also want to recognize Cassie Philbin, our Parks and Rec Director. She's been the interim city manager, and she's done a fabulous job and, um, just awesome. We have not had any, um, disruption in any of our day-to-day operations here at the city of Gochay. We've continued to move forward, just like we will continue to move forward with Mr. Mols being our city manager. So thank you, Ms. Philbin, and thank you, Mr. Mols.
Ma'am, he won't be on the presentation today in Mexico. I think he has something he wants to say. In fact, I'll be next week.
Next meeting.
I thought I'd say, you know, I'm going to be somewhere, I don't know.
Okay.
That means he would like to do a presentation at the first.
It's beginning to be similar.
Yes, we go all that, Mr. Mols.
Okay.
Next, uh, now, Ms. James, I mean, Ms. Philbin.
Yes, Mayor, a taste of the holiday will be December fourth at the Formosa Mall property from four P. M. to seven P. M. to include the Coca-Cola Christmas truck, the polar bear and food trucks. The next event will be the Gochay Rotary Club, uh, Christmas Parade will be December the sixth at twelve noon. Lineup will take place on William Payne. Lights and lighting up on the bay will be Saturday, December sixth, following the Christmas Parade at the Formosa Mall property. And city offices will be closed Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Wednesday, December twenty-fourth, Thursday, December twenty-fifth, and Friday, December twenty-sixth, in observance of the Christmas holiday, and Thursday, January first, and Friday, January second, for the New Year's holiday.
Thank you, um, Ms. Philbin. And then, we will have Chief Latch come up, um, so we can recognize our firefighter of the year. Um, and then... And Captain Goff is going to speak on behalf of, um, Fire Chief Latch because of, due to his voice, he's lost his voice.
All right, Mike, we're going to congratulate firefighter Tillman on receiving firefighter of the year, um, in his six years of employment with the city. I personally got to work with him over the years, and to watch him get into the fire service and not know anything about it, he has excelled in learning and training, hard work. He's been an asset to our city, and you couldn't ask for a better employee. He, he goes above and beyond each and every shift, and we just want to congratulate you on receiving that, and nobody else could compare this year to what he's done.
So I will, um, firefighter of the year is presented to Aaron Tillman in recognition of your outstanding performance, personal commitment, and dedicated service for twenty-twenty-five. On behalf of the city of Gochay, the city council, and the citizens of Gochay and Gochay Fire Department, we present you with this plaque. And the firefighters, if they, um, we'll get one photo with them, and then y'all come. And now, we get off our...
Hey, y'all can fit in, y'all come up here. Hey, y'all started to come in. You've been stationed for a while.
Somebody on my... Get up here.
Come on, Gary, you showed us more than just...
Next, we will have, um, Chief Bevers come, um, to present the, um, police officer of the year.
So, Police Department five-two awards, Scotty Byrd is our officer of the year. Based on his performance this year in the impact on the department and the community. Just a brief clip notes, this year, he has seized over four hundred and seventy-five thousand in illegal drug-related crimes, removed thirty-five firearms from potential criminal use, intercepted more than seven hundred pounds of marijuana and THC products, on top of which, he also captured a capital murder suspect who wanted out of Texas, and this is a few accolades of what he's done so far this year, and an easy choice of collecting as our officer of the year. Congratulations.
In recognition of your dedicated service and professionalism, Scotty Byrd, it's hereby awarded the police officer of the year twenty-twenty-five. On behalf of the city of Gochay, mayor, city council, and the citizens of Gochay and the Gochay Police Department, we thank you for your service and commitment. And now, uh, the police department. Thank you all again. You know, we thank our public safety and all of our employees and us, but our public safety here lately, if you've not watched the media, um, have been very active in Gochay, Mississippi, from working murder scenes to working house fires, to everything, car accidents, we just thank y'all for everything you do. If y'all didn't notice, they did not want to be here. Okay, that brings us next, um, our business agenda. Consider a request for a three-foot variance to front yard setback requirements for an accessory structure and a R-one mortgage to the single-family residential zoning district located at twenty-four-hundred Santa Cruz, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-five dash forty-seven dash V A R dot funding director, Mr. Scotty.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Don Frederick for three-foot variance to front yard setback requirements for accessory structure. The application fee of a hundred and seventy-five dollars was paid on October third, twenty-twenty-five, and all public notes requirements have been met. Some background, on, on the case, the applicant, uh, would like to build a twenty-by-twenty unattached carport to be located on the side of the primary structure. The carport will be three feet in front of the front building line of the primary structure. As we know, the ordinance requires for all accessory structures to be behind the front building line, so this building would encroach that by three feet, uh, therefore, uh, the need for the three-foot variance. I've included in your packet the definition of hardship to your review, also the UDO section of four-point-one-eight, which describes the variance process, and the criteria for approval. Upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommended approval of the variance due to the evidence presented in the meeting. The criteria for, for approval from the UDO is listed. The city council may approve the variance, approve the request for changes, or deny the variance. Again, I've included the minutes from the meeting, the applications through your review, and also the applicant here tonight answering the questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Grant, and Kristen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to accept the, um, the planning commission's recommendation to approve a request for a three-foot variance to the front yard setback requirement for an accessory structure and a R-one mortgage to the single-family residential zoning district located at twenty-four-hundred Santa Cruz, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-five dash forty-seven dash V A R, PID number eight-six-three-zero-two-zero-three dot zero-zero-zero. Got a motion by Councilman Minor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson? Any discussions, starting with Councilman Elvin, it's the second meeting of the month. Councilman Fuller?
What, what was the problem they had to do about this guy?
Oh, so, Councilman Fuller, in the beginning, uh, uh, the applicant came in, we did, um, give the information to the applicant that if he attached this to the actual primary structure, then it became part of the primary structure, therefore, he wouldn't need to meet that, that setback of being in front of the building line, but the applicant decided, uh, that he did not want to connect, that he wanted the accessory structure. Uh, the ordinance requires the accessory structures to be behind the front building line of the primary structure or house, and he actually wants to place it three foot in front of that line, so that would require this three-foot variance to be put.
So we believe the plan has a vast variety, that it's looking convenient, it's accessible with...
Uh, I believe so. That probably would be a question for the applicant as well, yes.
Yeah, I reside the house, and it's already built, so I just wanted, I want to throw something out, and I want to talk about what we can do about it. So, we did not get a permit to build this carport. It's already built, beautiful, I don't probably need to pick on this specific carport, but we either need to enforce the laws or change the laws, because ten years ago, when the planning commission, you would not believe how many times people are not following our UDO, they get a contractor that is not full permitted, or they get a, you know, nighttime worker bee that just builds chairs and, and bails for the permit either. The owners don't know the full permit, and then we've got this atrocity here that the neighbors probably don't like. So, we, we either gotta enforce the rules, or we gotta change the UDO sets to, to not make it so strict. This, this particular carport looks really nice, I don't have a problem with it. It has plenty of room to get out of the driveway, it's probably forty, fifty feet from the road, but I just, we gotta do something, and I just want to point that out, since this is a specific case where a permit is not full by the ordinance.
I'm home. Let's, um, let's get Councilman Jackson in, and then we're gonna let you, you know, okay? Then come up here and state your first and last name, and you can...
My, my name is Don Frederick. I did...
Paint your address, Mr. Frederick.
I'm sorry.
State your address for the...
Oh, twenty-four-hundred Santa Cruz, here in Gochay. So, I did get a permit, I think it was a permit. I came up here, bought the planning, thinking this is what I wanted, they don't want to attach it to the house, so it was ready to go.
So, I made my stuff in there, so when you said you wanted to attach it to the house, no permit was required. When you changed that is when the permit was required.
So, Councilwoman Jameson, wait, that they issued a permit, um, he said attached to the house, did you issue the permit attached to the house or not?
I, I would have to, I'd have to check.
So, it sounds like if there was a permit issued, it was because it was attached to the house, he would still have to have a permit to build a structure. So, but, and he told him to attach to the house, but then when he didn't attach it to the house, and if he didn't come back to the city and say, where they said, well, now you can't do it because it's not attached to the house.
So, I'm a little confused on what a permit is. I, I went, got it, thought for years, plans, and I proceeded to build it. When it was built, then I was going to go back, get them to come back on, and I guess stand for approval. So, that's what I was in process, but as I'm looking at it going, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know how, I don't like it, I don't want to attach it. So, it was, uh, there was a change in my mind. I came back to the city up here, I said, I want to modify my plans, hence the three-foot, uh, it's not attached, it's a three-foot there. I would be more willing to, to attach it to avoid all this, but I prefer not.
I mean, so, I made the paperwork, said he didn't have a permit, so if he did, then still have to verify that, but it's still, my point is, when you don't do what the original permit says, and you want to do something different, you have to go ask permission before you do it, instead of after, and now we're kind of forced to give you a variance because it looks really nice, you've spent a lot of money, you know that your neighbors complained, so that's, you know, it's a small point. Like I said, I'm not picking on you, sir, because your carport is really nice looking, but we have had some things built in this city that are embarrassing, and this, this exact thing happened on those, and I just think that we need to either enforce the law or change the law going forward. Not on you.
I don't know what I did wrong, I was...
Well, you can't build it the way you wanted it without a new permit, is what you said.
Well, that's basically, here's what happened, Alex, I can maybe explain it. So, basically, at some point, and without Mr. Angerson having the whole file here, to be able to, um, explain to us, accept, bestow. Basically, what it appears is you came through the city hall to apply for a permit, and when you did, you presented plans that shows it attached to the house, so they can issue you a permit. And if you got that, but then you decided, oh, I don't want it attached to the house anymore, it don't look good. By our ordinance, you cannot build anything in front of the front plane of your house, and it's not just ours, it's a nationwide, pretty much, thing, because we're all using a blanket. Pretty much, our development ordinance are consistent here, on the coast, we try to streamline them. So, if you build in front of your front plane of your house, then you have to, without it attached, you have to come and do this, a special exemption, or request for a variance, or some type of means to be able to allow it. So, that's what you've done here. What Councilwoman Jameson is saying is yours is nice, but sometimes we get to a point where, what can we do to try to rectify and solve this from continuing to happen? So, before it's built, like, let the builder, why didn't the builder or person come here and apply for this? And then we say yes or no, before it's built, because once it's built, it's hard to do that. And she's trying to see, did it follow the contractor, the city staff, who allowed it to get to this point without addressing it for the matter?
It was me.
Yeah.
I went, when it was being built, I started trying to figure out, I pretty much did that a little help, and I looked at it, went, I don't like the way it's done. I would, like I said, I could go back and attach it to, to get by all of it, so I didn't think it was a big deal.
And you just didn't think it would look aesthetically right and handsome, is what I heard you sort of, that's what I took from something you said.
And I agree, it looks better the way it is.
So, in this case, but she's trying to get it so this don't, and it's not your problem, it's something we're gonna have to work with, with our new city manager, our city attorney, our planning director, because it's not just you, it continues to sort of happen. We got people continue to think they don't have to pull block ads, permits for block ads, when they do. They think they just go to the DMR and can do them, and then they got a big block ad, well, then who do we get punished? In history of the city, we've notified the city manager and planning director to file what they call a complaint with the state board of contractors. So, it's on them, because every contractor that does work for DMR or the state of Mississippi, they clearly have it bold on their permits and on their testing and everything else, that you don't work in any area without pulling a permit. So, any licensed contractor in this state of Mississippi that took that test and is licensed and certified to do any work, should know to go to the county, the municipality, order the state agency, if it involves a state agency to get permitting. So, that's not your problem, that's for us.
I understand, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate that, but I, I kind of did it myself, so I, I didn't know, I didn't know what was with it.
But in the past, it's been contractors coming before us, and they just think, oh, we built it, and then we go ask for forgiveness, and then nobody, all they get told is, don't let it happen again. Well, Councilwoman Jameson, what you hear her saying is, she's tired of that happening, who's gonna pay the price, and let's make a believer out of someone?
Not my issue.
But we do appreciate the fact that you're being honest and we want to make it right, okay?
And you're being honest, and you're being honest, but some of them are not as honest when they come before us.
And you used aesthetically pleasing materials to build this carport, and it looks really nice, I went by there and looked at it. So, I'm just saying, but that doesn't always happen, and that's the point I want to make.
That's what, yeah, kudos to you for making it look better than it would. Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilman Minor, a second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, approval of the documented claims. This presentation was by our city clerk in her department. They were furnished on, um, line, accessible to all citizens and the council. That is the presentation. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve the documented claims? Hereby approved, provided all entries there are true, correct, properly entered in my process. Motion by Councilwoman Jameson, but last whoever. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Elvin. Any discussions, starting with Councilman Elvin, Councilman Fuller, Councilman Minor, Councilwoman Jameson? Councilman Jackson? Got a motion by Councilwoman Jameson, a second by Councilman Elvin, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda. That brings us to business agenda items one through six. They're approved in one motion unless they are, uh, not self-claimed, unless somebody wants to pull one. Does anybody want to pull one? Do we have consent agenda item number one? Is approval amended from regular council meetings on November the fourth, twenty-twenty-five? Consent agenda item number two? Receive September twenty-twenty-five finance reports. Consent agenda item number three, approval to renew a rental agreement with Pitney Bowes Inc. Four, resolution approving the sponsorship of Gochay Rotary Christmas Parade to be held on December the sixth, twenty-twenty-five at twelve P. M. Number five, resolution approving the closure of the ropes and traffic control measures for the Gochay Rotary Club Christmas Parade that will be held at twelve P. M. Do we have a motion to approve one through five? Motion by Councilman Jackson, do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Jameson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our, um, study agenda, and, um, I don't think, our study agenda, I think somebody accidentally forgot to sign in. Mr. Gray Canada, were you wanting to speak?
Yes, there's, there's nothing, uh, dear.
Okay, I'm gonna let you sign in, I'll have to repeat speaking, but you got three minutes.
Um, Mr. Gray Canada, fourteen fifty-three Route in Tilly, and, uh, there's a lot of, um, uh, I think, bio-optic installment in the neighborhood, and some, some of the neighbors are complaining that none of them was notified, and then you have, you have these people just coming in, just digging in the yard, nothing was sent in the mail, nothing to say that they're going to be in that neighborhood. I mean, it should have been something probably in the mail, or on the door, or just a knock on the door and say, hey. It's a benefit, because we're about to get, you know, internet, so, I mean, and it's an easement, and they have the rights. But courtesy is the only thing that I think I'm saying, and some of the other neighbors are saying, that they didn't get the courtesy of just going, when they come in, and what are they going to do? I mean, some of them look just like real gray doors, you know, and they didn't in the yard. So, that, that was something I wanted to bring up, because some of the citizens came to me and asked what is going on.
Well, I can, um, first, I will let Ms. Morgan, um, unless Ms. Philbin, you don't set address it, or Ms. Morgan. I can tell you, we have protocols, I can tell you, we have protocols in place that they are to follow. I can tell you, we have to increase their bonds to do work in Gochay, Mississippi, because they continue. Yes, they will tell you, and yes, it don't matter, any municipality, they have the right to do their work in their right of way. It is a courtesy for them to notify everybody, that's all. And we can per se enforce courtesy on them, we're told, however, we do put working hours constraints on them, so it don't take possibly overtime hours. I can totally understand, because being the frustration of just having a sewer project done, and then a utility service provider doing work, and there's no doubt in my mind, but it's not been fit, been found yet, that they have got a major sewage line somewhere. So, tell, I'm, and the residents, then it messed up their yards, then they're gone for weeks, then you got a, a post hanging with the light and vines and everything, and you gotta fancy and try to deal with the service provider, because the one can't remove the old pole until the other three carriers that have agreement with them to remove. So, it is a bureaucracy and a pain in the rear end. But I will let Ms. Morgan address, because certain ones follow the protocol, and certain ones try to stay back.
You've pretty much hit every nail on the head with everything. We have, however, on our permits, even though it is a courtesy, we have put on there that they, the, whatever subcontractors for these private companies are supposed to be doorknockers at least twenty-four hours in advance, that they're gonna be in the neighborhood. They're also all supposed to wear badges and a safety vest, so you know what company they work for and why they're there, and that we also require at least... they work for, and why they're there, and that we also require at least one English-speaking person there to, in case there are any problems, that they can explain exactly what's going on. So those are the three things that we have added to our permits, to help as much as we can, the homeowner, while they're doing right, and they're, or while they're working their easements.
So at this point, Mr. Canada, that's what we can tell you, we are putting the requirements on them, we're putting in the permitting. If you have a problem, call Gochey Utility Department, advise them, or, and/or call Gochey, um, Planning Department, notify them, and one of the two departments will coordinate, they will go out there and oversee, um, and check to see who is doing the work, and tell them they should get something out. Um, but the protocols have been put in place for months now, and I hate that that's happening to you, but the protocols are in place. And we call them, they come to meetings at city hall, with the service providers, AT&amp;T, Cedar River Electric, Ceasefire, Sparklight, um, am I missing one? I think I got them all. And every one of them, trust me. And then they put, right in the middle of somebody's yard, they, we did work with AT&amp;T, I think, and they agreed not to put a big thing in front of somebody's front yard, they have agreed to just put a flat thing, um, thanks to one of their representatives. But they're not required to do that, that's just them going above and beyond. So that's their right of way, they all have easements, when people buy their homes, the easements are on their deeds.
Yes, yes, I do understand that.
Unfortunately.
It just, like you said, you guys put it in there, but they just, they follow it.
That's right.
And you can't enforce it, you know?
Well, we did, when we get notified of it, then they go out and they enforce it, they can actually tell them to stop work until they do it. So they can enforce it, but they gotta be notified, either call Public Works or call the Planning Department. And then they can go out there and actually tell the job to stop until they notify and follow the permit. They gotta follow the permit. So yes, they can do something about it, but we gotta be notified. The city don't know if they've gone out there and placed the place anchors or not.
Right, right, that's all I'm agreeing on.
Yeah.
I thought it was important, because, and some of the yards is a mess, some, some yards they, they, well, putting it back together, some.
And if they don't.
I called them a couple of times to get it to go right.
And if they don't, those homeowners need to call Public Works or the Planning Department and tell them, let the city staff deal with the, whoever's doing it, because they need to see who pulled the permit.
Right, real quick, uh, uh, for AT&amp;T was out, um, the, the, the foreman who not gave me his car, said if anything's wrong, we'll come back and make it right. So he did give him a car, but I don't think other people knew about it. And I did call him, he come back out, and tried to get it right, but still didn't get it right, called him back, and finally got it right. So yes, uh, but, but now we have Cedar River that's coming in, that's in the neighborhood now, and still there's no protocol as far as, you know?
And they did not Cedar River electric, did put a door?
No, no.
Okay. And, and then also, anytime it's not repaired properly, the reason it's important for each citizen at their home to call the city, the reason it is important, they can also call us, but they're, eventually it's gonna go to the city. So if they call the city, then, then, then they should reach out to maybe their councilman, and then so forth, go up to councilman at large and meet, but while the, it's important that they reach out directly to the city, is so the city can follow up and go out there. The city needs to track it, so when they're issuing future permits, they put higher demands, meaning borrowing money on them, when they're not doing the work they should have done.
Right, okay.
So there's a protocol in place, and that's why that protocol is in place. And we have put it out there on social media before, and we will, um, I will request that the interim city manager, Ms. Ilbo, um, put another social media blurb out there on the city Facebook and the city app, notifying citizens of that, um, importance, because it is important, and that's why you need to do that.
Yes, yes, I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Great. What you just.
Oh, man, and they were there. Mr. Gray, you know? Okay, thank you. That brings us to our discussed council comments. It's the, um, second meeting of the month, so we will start with Councilman Elvin.
I'd always like to thank all of our city employees, and our public works, uh, employees and our contract departments, for all the work we do every day, uh, working for families and families, for applying, and walking through the team, for the side of the head, and wait to see, enjoy those months. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. Councilman Fuller? Mr. White, no comment on anything? Oh, my goodness.
We stayed on the down.
Councilwoman Jameson?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to thank Jax, the staff, for the transition, all of them, amazing. Didn't, you know, everything ran very smooth, still got up with recreation, everything's great, appreciate all y'all's hard work and working together. Uh, and I do look forward to working with Mr. Moles, and, uh, we're moving forward with the city, and we're gonna all work together, and y'all do a lot, and it's a role that I've, I've known him since I was twelve, I guess. So he's a great guy, and we staffed a little of him. Uh, my experience with the fiber optic people, and, and although I didn't know that it was gonna be so positive, it ended up being positive. I, so Cedar River connect has got my phone number, she didn't know who I was, she texts me every fifteen minutes for about four days, because she made me leave work to come live them in my backyard, to run their lines in the back, and I had to leave work two days. The first day they never showed up, second day I had to leave work again, and they showed up, and, uh, and she apologized, she was very communicative. Several people apologized, even after they knocked my power off for four hours. And, but the power company was right out there, and they got it all taken care of, so, uh, it, it definitely has been a little disruptive, we've had to worry with things, things like that, but, um, it is gonna be a positive thing, we're ready to have this high-speed fiber optic. We just gotta figure out who, who to go with, and they all want your business, so be careful. I told my dad, they were telling him things like, you gotta do it now, or it's gonna be too late, and I'm like, no, 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 no. Like, so we research and decide who's gonna go with, because that's, you know, that's not right to do that to older people that think that, that that's true, so, so tell your, your family members or friends, be careful and, and research who they're gonna go with. Don't feel obligated to jump. One thing I've learned at the city yard training is, if they make it sound like it's an emergency, it's probably his thing, so be careful. Um, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I first want to thank all of, uh, you know, uh, what is, uh, what's going on with us, as the city manager, the life positive that you, we appreciate you coming up for, as well as, uh, Cassie, being a hard-working effort for what you've done, keep the city running smooth, I echo the rest of you, uh, it's, it's been a real positive, um, transition. Um, to these four, the five optic, I do have something to say about this. Um, one of the things that I noticed that, some of the right of ways, they're working outside of the right of way. And, um, like, they're going through people's yards, and, and you can see where the right of way is supposed to be, because it's a, uh, it's a lot of trees, and they don't wanna go through the trees and bushes and whatever. So who's responsible, one, who's responsible for keeping the trees clean for those right of ways, because they're working outside of the right of ways, which, that's how they conflict with the, uh, the community. When you look in your backyard, and, you know, you got fence and everything, and we got people that said, and they were building a lot of fence lats, you know, they got a box of fence, whatever, whatever, built the fence latch, and then they had locks on their fence latch, and they find, managed to pick the fence latch and go into the property, and whatever they had to do. So, you know, with that in mind, who's responsible for cleaning the, the, um, the areas where the, um, um, where it's supposed to be right of way?
Yeah.
No, they can tell the owners. Or, that are in the rear of the property, are, who's responsible will be the utility company. There's a power company, fire company, the phone company, they're the ones that are, like, wherever there's a utility easement in the rear of a property, they're the ones that are responsible for that. The city's responsible for the easement in the front, where our water and our sewer is.
Do the, find them.
But if the, now our water and sewer runs through that easement also, then it's a joint collaboration, but the city's only responsible for where our water and sewer lines are. If it's a dedicated utility easement, or wa, or power, or for gas, or for fiber, or for the telephone, then those companies are responsible for it.
Well, that's what I said, we.
No, not us.
We all, everybody that has something in front of them.
What pitch?
Custom. Well, I got nothing. So that's, that's what I figured, I figured it was the company's responsibility.
Yes, sir.
So some kind of way, when they get outside of that easement, somebody's gonna have the edge, then back, back into the easement, they're gonna have to cut those trees down, push it down, because that's where the conflict coming in, where they running it, because I had one in my board, and I saw where the easement's supposed to be, and they ran it, and they, instead of going into the easement, they went on the other side of their fence, into their yard, and ran it. So I think that, that's where the conflict is coming in for that. Um, just something to keep in mind, you know, you know, if you wanna ease the public, that's the best way to, you know, to have that, make sure they, they do it. Um, the answer about the building, you know, when you say people building, um, uh, they're inspecting on the pizza, um, I know, because I have two, two apartments, and normally what they do is they take it to the face. Um, if it's something that you could just build, they'll say, go ahead and build it. When I come in, I'm expecting, but normally it's like, you building, I don't know, you got a slab, and then you gonna build something up or whatever, they gonna say, build a slab first, we inspect this, and when you build these studs up, walls and all that, the company expects that before you go over there. That's normally what they do, so I, I think this is why it's been a call for, which is, uh, hey, just go ahead and build it, we can keep what you're doing, it's pretty much sealed, you know, it's open, so it's a call for, those are the phases that normally go for, for builders. I ain't wanna interrupt.
I don't think we have a problem with, uh, building houses, it's mostly sheds and fences and.
The same, same with sheds, it's, it's the same rules for that, but it wasn't, he didn't, he wasn't putting down a concrete foundation, so it wasn't like, hey, build this, inspect this first, and then make sure you got all the, whatever, whatever, to make this work. You know, so, I'm, I was just putting that out there, so you know that they are, um, inspecting. Now, the only thing that goes outside of that is when people try to cheat something up, without, without wanting to do, um, buildings.
There you go.
At all, they don't go to, they don't go to cheat, cheat at all, they'll just build something up, okay? Yeah, so there you go. Yeah, that's gonna be tough, they just might as well go around and get it. Um, that's pretty much all I have.
That's it. That's it. Thank you. Um, I just want to say, Councilman George is absent, um, out of town. I want to, to thank the city staff. It is November, it's getting ready to be Thanksgiving, and every one of us have a lot more than we might think to be thankful for. And every day, I'm thankful, um, of the citizens of Gochey who elect me to serve them, and I cannot thank them enough. It's an honor and privilege to work for them. Um, I also wanna thank Ms. Ilbo for her service during this, I can't thank her enough. Um, literally, she's been jumping on the spot, I wanna thank our clerk, um, she's been there too, and welcome Mr. Moles, and, you know, tell your dad, I hate, I missed him this evening. Um, but look forward, you know, your voter spirit is very high in your Gochey spirit, so there's no doubt that he won't fit in, and we will continue to move that shape forward. Um, I also want to introduce, because we have, Mr. Moles is new here, and he don't know everybody per se, we have some citizens that don't know, so it, it's our last, um, meeting before Thanksgiving, so I'm just gonna ask each director that's here to say, one, introduce yourself and your department, and say one thing you are thankful for. So we will start with Ms. Ilbo.
I am Cassie Ilbo, I am the full-time Parks and Recreation Director, and I am thankful to the Recreation Department, because they have held it together since October one, and I have been at the city hall.
Thank you, Ms. Ilbo.
Chief David Buber, and I am thankful to be with staff.
And you are thankful that, count this down, thirty-five percent. Ms. Montgomery?
I'm Teresa Montgomery, I'm the city clerk, and I'm thankful that I finally finished the F five twenty twenty five report.
Thank you. Um, Sam King?
I'm Sam King, the Grants and Projects Director, I'm thankful for all of our city employees, because we all have to work together, all the departments work together, and they help keep my office, and, uh, help me get everything done. I'm especially thankful for Brenda, who's in my department, and not doing without her, she's been great.
Ms. Morgan?
I'm Ramona Morgan, I'm the Public Works Director, and I am thankful for City of Gochey and our work family, I'm really proud of how well we all work together, and I'm also proud that you have a holiday next Thursday and Friday, and the fiber work is gonna go on.
Uh, Mr. Michael Easterly is our Public Works Service Provider, um, with H. Ranger, with H. Student Innovations. We're thankful for y'all's partnership in our Public Works Service Provider, and introduce yourselves.
Michael, I'm the project manager, great show here in Gochey. Um, probably what I'm thankful for the most is everyone's constant drive, I envision to make this place, a better place than it was yesterday, so, thank you everyone, it's really fun, and that process, and it's a really awesome thing to say.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you of us, have all you, y'all with yourself. Chief Black?
I'm, I'm Chief Charles Black, um, I'm thankful for all my employees, and I'm in trust, because we trust you. Not going to stop while everything's police. And all my employees.
Thank you, Chief Black, but I always, I said you had to stick a little bit, that I thank you for taking the touch. Um, and Mr. Ankrison?
I'm Scott Ankrison, I'm Director of the Planning Department, definitely thankful for my employees, uh, you know, my department, we, we cover a pretty broad spectrum of responsibilities, that's what we, all, all the departments do. Uh, we spend a lot of time and effort trying to, to, to make the public happy, give them what they need, what they want, and, uh, I'm just proud of my employees, that they really do go above and beyond, they wear so many hats, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of them, and really all the city employees and departments, we all work well together out there, and we're proud of the city, where we, you know, where we come from, since I've been here, going on eleven years now, where we've come from, and we're looking very proud of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrison. And with us tonight, for y'all who don't know, we have former Chang Street Court Judge here, we have Chuck Gordis with Gordis, Danos, and Pierce, he is Philomen, our city attorney is out of town, and so we welcome you, and would you like to say?
Yes, I'm thankful that Josh Stanoff went out of town so I could be here tonight. I'm also thankful to hear all of the positive comments by all of you here tonight, and I'm also thankful that the good Lord continues to bestow all the blessings on the city of Gochey.
Thank you, Mr. Gordis, we're blessed to have you and your commitment to Jackson County and Gochey. And our service provider, Waste Pro, as the rep is not here, Mr. David Olson, but we are very grateful for them and their, um, team, they always go above and beyond in their contract, they can be a stickler to that, and they really, when we call upon them, they pick up stuff that's not in their contract. they pick up stuff that's not in their contract, that they can put the service back onto the citizen, and they go above and beyond and go. We have natural disasters that make us not meet a threshold, that they, um, do not really should have to pick it all up at one time. They could do it over a period of time. They went above and beyond, pretty much cut it up within a week, which is very uncommon when you have a natural disaster. So if you see your service providers, H two O, our city staff, Waste Pro, please thank all them for their hard work. Lastly, our city staff. I've been elected, two terms as Councilman, one term as Mayor on the second term. I've attended the Mississippi Municipal League, and I'm ever so grateful to have my colleagues up here that have attended, that are certified. I also am grateful for my colleagues up here for their service. I'm grateful for their eagerness to go to MML and learn. You all came boots on the ground, you attended the conference, you're attending the classes, and you're eager to learn, and I thank you for that. I also want to say that when you get and participate with your other cities throughout the state, from the south to the north, and you feel like you have a challenge, I can tell you there is a sister city somewhere else or one in our state that is facing more challenges than we are today. And we should be blessed and thankful, but keep them in our thoughts and prayers. We also have city staff, the amount of city staff we have for our size of our city and our budget is way under some of the other ones. We have employees doing two and three and four jobs when some of our other cities have the funds to pay to have that amount of staff. So we should be thankful here in Goche, and I want to thank y'all, I can't thank you all enough. I know that they sometimes feel like we're unthankful, but we are really precious for them. I'm also thankful for all of our nonprofits and all of our donors who continue to contribute for our youth, our events. And without all the nonprofits or those donors, we didn't have what we have today, so I thank them. Also, before we go, I need to ask the council, it was brought to my attention, I got a phone call, but I feel like we should, um, vote if the council wants. Normally, the Goche Senior Center is closed on Thanksgiving and not rented out to the no-staff working. We have a nonprofit or potential nonprofit, if they provide the nonprofit documents that wants to hold a Thanksgiving luncheon free to the citizens in need in our community to be able to serve roughly, they have planned to have enough for about two hundred people if it meant that. So with that being said, we can't rent it, went to a nonprofit or allow them to use it without, um, a vote from the board. We won't meet again before then, so if I can just, we get a motion to allow a nonprofit to use, if they harness their documents, um, to the city, to allow them to use, um, Goche Senior Center on Thursday, you know, then for the twenty-fifth.
The second or the third?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant December, I'm sorry, twenty-seventh, November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Motion by Councilman Fuller, a second by Councilwoman Jameson, all in favor? Motion carries. I don't know the name of the nonprofit, but we will get it if they need to staff.
It's all the same, divide and equal.
That's right, that's what the motion is. And if not, they, if they can't harness that work, they're, Ms. Billbo can let them rent it or something. Next, Ms. Billbo, you have any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Ms. Montgomery, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Um, Mr. Gordis, do you have any comments?
Couple. Mr. Jackson, easements are very intriguing aspect of real property law. But just generally speaking, those who benefit from that easement have the duty to maintain that easement.
Yes, sir.
They get outside, then they have trouble with the property owners.
That's right, that's right.
That is just kind of generally speaking.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I've been advised that there are.
I'm gonna put up, Mr. Gordis, real fast to clarify, if we have any citizens that think anybody is outside their easement, please have them contact City Hall. City Hall can just, if it's in the easement or out of the easement, and will direct you in any way possible. To clarify, utility easements are not always the same as water and sewer easements. And yes, unfortunately, Mr. Danos is not here, but we have neighbors that put fence on the right of way in the easement, we have it in one whole subdivision where it's all like this and the drainage paint. But the city's tried to work with them, but it's really, they, their fence are in the easement where it shouldn't be and it restricts drainage. So people, when they have a fence in the easement, it's their responsibility to remove and replace the fence. And Mr. Danos says that is the property owner's responsibility.
That is true.
Is that correct?
All right.
So a fence in right of way, you're responsible for the fence. Now, I just wanna clarify for everybody now.
It's been brought to my attention that there are a couple of issues that could qualify for executive session. I recommend that you have a closed session to determine the need for executive session.
Okay, do we have a motion to go into closed session to see if we have reason to go into executive? Motion by Councilwoman Jameson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Madison, all in favor? Motion carries, we're in executive session, I mean, closed session to see if executive.